I'd like to call to order the Thursday, December 19th meeting for the Burwick Planning Board. This is a regular meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For all those watching at home and here, introducing our board members, we have Frank Underwood, we have Sean Winston, David Ross Lyons, who will be a regular voting member tonight, and Mike LaRue. And I'm glad I remembered all your names. We're going to open the first public comment session right now. The public comment session is open to any Burwick resident with business under the purview of the Burwick Planning Board. We do have a public hearing tonight, so if your comments or questions are regarding the conditional use application for the medical marijuana storefront, please save those for the public hearing. And with that, we're going to open the public comment session. All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public comment session and move to the approval of minutes from the November 21st meeting. I know Frank had some changes that James made. Are you happy with those changes?
Yes, I am. It adds a little more detail that I thought we should have in there as it relates to the soils concerned and classifications. So I'm glad that's in there. And I understand we may get a memo later on from planning regarding what the chairman had asked for or what Dave Andreessen had asked for.
Any other changes?
No, I'm good with them.
Sean?
No.
Mike?
Nope.
Mr. Ross Lyons.
I am good.
You are good. Well, then I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes to our meeting of the 21st of November.
Can I have...
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay, one abstaining. And now we are going to... So the public hearing is still open from our last meeting, so we're going to continue the public hearing. And so anybody with any questions, comments, or concerns about the conditional use application for the medical marijuana storefront at Tuboe Street, which is in the SCI zone, Williams Greenery LLC, please come to the podium, state your name for our viewers at home, and your address, please. And sir, you're the applicant, correct?
Yep.
So you... This is just the public hearing part, but I'll have you come up during old business. Thank you. I see you public members out there. Let's hear it.
Young, I'm a resident of Bridge Street, have been for 46 years. The planning board is a duly constituted department of community, the town of Burwick. And as such, you have the responsibility for implementing the comprehensive plan and other aspects of planning for the community. You graciously permit people to come up and talk, but this is not a deliberative session where we can have a robust dialogue with debate. So I'll make my comments, and you people can consider them. But it's up to you to make your decisions. And so we rest our case with you. There's been a lot of planning and a lot of angst for the town of Burwick since the tannery closed. And they're trying to make it a better community. It's a slow process, and it comes very slowly, but it comes with time. And so it's in the best interest of the town to try and get this right as it moves forward. Now, a lot of work has gone into it, and people have a lot of vision about what they want to see. But what I'm starting to see, it looks like you're opting for the first thing you can get, and it looks like you're going to have the three Ps: pizza, pawn shops, and pot. You guys can do better than that, and you ought to have the concerns of the community taught most in your minds. If you can't provide for the safety and security of people that live in the area, it shouldn't go forward. And nothing can be more terrifying than to have somebody inserted drugs break into your home or your apartment and attack you with a baseball bat. And so a review of a police department and all of the incidents that have gone on in the neighborhood because of drugs ought to be considered. And if you can clearly demonstrate that this is not a problem, fine. Otherwise, the applicant is perfectly free to go and put in an application in any subdivision that he wants to, but I don't think that would happen. The applicant has a building, wants to rent a building that has four entrances to it. I'd like to know which entrance is going to be utilized for the business. And two of them are on Rochester Street, and there is no parking on Rochester Street. And the other entrances only have two parking spaces in front of the building in question. And there's another business in that building. So parking could be a problem. Security and possible criminal activity pose another threat. And the overall benefit to the community may not be that great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the public hearing on the medical marijuana storefront? All right, seeing nobody come up, I'm going to close the public hearing for the Williams Greenery, and we are going to move on to old business now, and we can have the applicant come up to the podium and just catch us up on what you've been up to, what you've changed. We made some requirements of you the last time you were here, and maybe we can answer some of these questions that came up during the public hearing.
I went to Mo's to have signs made, and I had some samples that I believe you have. And then I went and got the lighting like you asked to make sure. I believe I've done everything in my part that you folks have asked for.
Sure. Can you answer for Mr. Young which entrance is going to be utilized on the property?
The entrance will be on Rochester Street, but it'll be the front door, the same as the accounting used to go in. It'll be the same door used as before.
So that what looks like the front door to the house?
Yes.
Okay. And then as... Yes, thank you, David. And then as far as security is concerned, we actually, James let me know that we do... The police chief does review all of our conditional use applications. It's part of our process. And he reviews the security plan. We don't have the letter back from the police chief yet.
I went to him twice, and he told me, and I told James, that I can't tell you what to put in for security. He says, "The townspeople should be telling you, not me." And I didn't want to go back a third time and get him worked up with me.
I've talked with Captain Locke and Chief Town. There's a letter on the way.
Yep.
I reached out Monday, so I think they are aware. Like you said, they reviewed your plan. It'd be helpful if you talk about the nuts and bolts of the security system you picked.
I went a little bit beyond. I could have had a security system for about $2,500. And I went, had Cory come over, security, and I'm up to about $5,000 so we could cover everything, every corner on the building, the windows, the doors, you know, to make sure we're ready up to...
Is that cameras? Is it motion sensors?
Everything, cameras.
Okay.
I mean, he just asked me, when am I going to... I said, "I can't talk to you until I get done."
So the police chief has that security plan, and that's what he's reviewing?
Yes, I give one to him.
Questions? Frank?
Just to follow up on that, James, in your discussion with Captain Locke or the chief, did they give any indication that they were concerned with this type of a use in the downtown?
No. No, their concern is with the language in our ordinance about having to formally approve something. I think they would prefer, and this is kind of a sidebar, but they would prefer the language in our ordinance to read that they reviewed it and have the opportunity to either recommend additions or say, "We have no further recommendations."
Which seems fair.
And then the only other thing I would say is that by the land use ordinance, it is an acceptable use in that district. It's a conditional use, so therefore it can't be denied because we don't like it or we don't agree with it. It has to... It can be approved with conditions. And I think we've tried to impose the conditions in the summary here that's been provided to us this evening, so.
Absolutely. And to further clarify that, it is an allowed use that the town voted on, so we don't just make up these rules and say, "Yeah, that can go there." The town voted on this last November. It's been an approved use for over a year now. The project has to comply with every applicable requirement of the ordinance, and that's our job. And then as far as conditions go, we can put conditions to, you know, enhance security or enhance landscape, whatever. They must be reasonable and directly related to the standards of review governing the proposal. So, you know, yeah, we can't shut something down because we don't like it or somebody doesn't like it. If it's an approved use, we go through the steps. We have pages of stuff that we have to go through to make sure that it complies and that everybody is safe and secure. And again, this is something that the town voted on, so everybody had an opportunity to vote.
We have a point where we should be closing the hearing and then going into...
I closed the hearing already. Yep. So Sean, do you have any questions, concerns?
No questions or concerns. I know we, you know, we spent a lot of time going through these things, and I don't know if I made a mistake. I missed this. I personally was not... I don't think I was in favor of having this use in the village overlay, but it is there. It's per the ordinances, so, you know, it meets all the standards and requirements. You know, I don't, like Nicole said, it's not my personal... My personal opinion is differs, but this is what the ordinances are, and this is what they meet, and they meet the ordinances, so.
Correct. The only thing I really have is to put a condition on there, the third condition to be a letter from the chief of police before a CO is issued stating that the security system is up to snuff. We also have conditions that it shall not become an adult-use storefront, so recreational marijuana, and that customers shall show a photo ID upon entering the storefront. So those are the three conditions that we've talked about already. Mike?
Mm-hmm.
Anything?
No.
David?
I have a couple of things. I, like the rest of the members, don't necessarily personally agree with this. However, it is part of the land use ordinance. You have, for the most part, met the requirements. We unfortunately don't have a choice. That being said, I do have some concerns. As far as running a medical facility, the access to this, there are stairs. How's that going to work for...
What do you mean, the stairs?
Getting into the building. If you're running a medical facility for, say, pain, lower back pain, back pain, neck pain...
Well, there's railings on the stairs and that, you know, and everything will be fine. I mean, if you go in there in brick steps, railings on both sides, already you're there.
Okay. Some of the medical dispensaries that I personally have visited are much more handicapped accessible, but I was just asking some questions on that.
Yeah, I don't know what the rules are about that, do you?
I don't either, but I think you bring up a good point because the person that has the card, that needs to show the ID, has to physically go into the building if I understand it right.
Yeah.
So that access for people that may be subject to those kinds of...
One of the requirements or one of the conditions that would warrant a medical marijuana card would be back pain or joint pains.
Yeah.
I mean, you did talk at one time about deliveries, but you weren't certain of that. Is that in the cards or not?
I'd like to. I mean, I'm going to take this slow. You know, you've got customers that are going to be... Want to do deliveries. I want to have a buzzer. And I want to talk to the landlord because I'd like to put a half-door when you go into the first room. And you can sit there, and you can have your... Look at the ID and put it on the computer, and they can't come beyond that door. If they don't have an ID and a medical card, they got to leave.
The only other thing I had was this use... The barber shop is occupying the first floor. This use is occupying the second floor only. Is the third floor a residential, and is that being maintained as a residential?
It was going to be just medical.
So the use for residential and the use for professional space will actually lapse at the end of the year? I mean, is this to replace a use or is this to have a use in addition?
I guess there'd be a question for the landlord.
Please step up to the microphone, Mr. Bouver.
Thanks for being here, by the way.
Yeah.
Alex Bouver, Sixth Country Lane, Burwick. The building is originally a house, and the third floor consists of two bedrooms. And if we... This use is approved, then yes, it will have two commercial businesses in it, but certainly the house is conducive to an in-home business also. And I don't know exactly how the rules change when two commercial entities are in there, but you have a suitable property, which is a mixed-use property. I would hope that down the road, it would be able to go back to a home-use property if Williams Greenery departs and somebody else who has a suitable home business comes in there because it's very well-suited for that. So I can't really speak to what happens after this lease would run out. But when it comes to the use now, there has been some talk of... There was some discussion early on with potentially having someone actually living there and running the business. And I don't know if Mr. Stilson's still thinking about that or not, but, I mean, I guess I don't really know how to answer the question about how what happens to the building.
So is the... So right now, you've got first floor, second floor. So I'm just trying to figure, as it stands, the third floor would not be used for anything currently?
Well, I can't speak for how Mr. Stilson's going to use the third floor, but, I mean...
Storage, okay.
The third floor is part of the second floor unit.
The main floor of the house is where the applicant is going to be. And that has a number of large rooms. It has a kitchen. I mean, it's a house, bathroom, et cetera. And then the upstairs just has two small bedrooms. So the layout of the house is... The house is... 75% of the house is on that main floor. The barber shop is in a very small 400-square-foot space in the bottom, and the upstairs is also quite small. By the design of the house, it's like a cape with the third floor, only the main part of the house has any space upstairs.
But you'll be leasing the middle floor and the upper floor as part of this use?
Yes.
Okay.
The use, which was previously an in-home business.
I realize that, yeah.
I think our code officer has something to add.
So you can definitely rent out an apartment in a building that there's a medical marijuana facility. We can't prevent him from doing that, you from doing that. There's a couple questions that I do have, though, if you're going to do that. I guess I would ask what the access would be inside the building to get over to his storefront. So that would be one. And my other question is, I'm just going to ask both. They're not related, just so that you have time. The front door access door, is there any... How do I want to say this? Is there anything in the plan to put bulletproof glass on that door?
I'll speak to the first... I... The house is not suitable for adding another unit. The only way the house would be suitable as a... To have residential in there with this use would be if the person who was living there was running the business. It's not laid out in any way that you would rent another unit out of the house.
Is there an inside staircase leading from the barber shop to the upstairs level?
There is, which is locked.
Okay.
And so there's no access between those two, no free access between those two. And then there's another stairway that goes from the main floor to the third-floor bedrooms or second-floor bedrooms, whatever you want to... Whatever you'd like to call it.
I was very ignorant on this subject up until a couple weeks ago, and I've been doing a little bit of research on it. And I really think that your tenant should consider putting bulletproof glass on the front door, the entrance door of his marijuana facility.
I can't... I guess I can... I can't speak to him, but certainly from a landlord's perspective, and for the applicant, I'd like to see if that's a precedent or if that's just a new thing, because I'm not sure, you know, if we get to do that wherever we want to do it.
I'm not sure if it's estate law.
Yeah.
It's in a lot of buildings, so I'm not really sure where that lies.
I don't know. Any other questions for me?
Well, not of you, but just maybe one more. I know that you made the comment that your daughter was going to school in Maryland to become a pharmacist.
We're talking about that.
Please step up to the mic.
Yeah. My only question is, is if it ever comes around that it becomes a requirement that medical marijuana dispensaries be run by a licensed pharmacist in that area of practice, does the state require that you do that, or is that going to be a condition?
It hasn't got that far yet. This college just started, and there's quite a waiting list for it right now. And when she graduates, she got one more semester. We've been talking about her going to school to go to Maryland for a two-year term on this, on the medical. So that, you know, I'm just trying to follow all the steps.
Yeah. And we're trying to learn, too, as we go and follow all the steps as they come into place. So I'm just wondering whether or not there should be a condition in there that we end up that he must comply with any of those rules and regulations.
Well, I think he's going to have to comply with state law.
Yeah, every year, he's going to have to renew for his licenses, so he's going to have to comply every year.
I think the license will take care of that.
Okay, just because if that's a requirement, I want to make sure that's imposed on him because it's coming from the state level, you're saying.
Local licensing, please. Do you want 2020 local licensing as well?
Okay, okay.
David?
Clarification, I'm sorry. Your daughter is in the program. You're talking about the program or been accept... I'm a little confused how that's...
She's in college right now, U S M. And we've been talking about when she graduates, maybe taking... Going to... When she told me this today, there's quite a waiting list right now. So it might take her another year or longer to even get into the school.
Okay, thank... I just... I was a little confused. I just wanted some clarification. Thank you.
Mike?
I'm good.
So are you guys all good?
The only thing I had was, you didn't pick it up. It says, "No orders will be omitted." I think it says, "No orders will be omitted."
Oh, it won't be orders, everything.
That's James, and you're right, I didn't pick it up.
That's Frank.
No, no, that's from Paul. Paul told me to correct that typo in there, just so that you know. Paul's got to have one typo.
He's all good. He's very good with typos. Has everybody had a chance to review the findings of fact? These are different than the ones that were emailed to us. They were a little bit updated. And is everybody comfortable with them or want any changes?
That's quite a typo.
Please change that, James.
Where's that one? It's right here.
That's funny. Good job, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Paul.
So I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve the findings of fact?
I'll make a motion that we approve the finding of facts for the William Greenery LLC application for conditional use at Tuboe Street for medical marijuana dispensary.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
And that is subject to the conditions that we have written in.
Yes, yeah. So the approval of the conditions, the conditions that we have are, number one, the conditional use shall not become an adult-use storefront. Number two, customers shall show a photo ID upon entering the storefront. And number three, a letter from the chief of police will be issued before the CO is issued. And our code enforcement officer will enforce that for us. So can I get a motion to approve the conditions of approval?
I'll make a motion that we approve the three conditions that we have on the findings of fact.
Thank you, Sean. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Five-zero. And then finally, we need a motion to approve the application.
I'll move that we approve the application for William Greenery LLC for the Tuboe Street use.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? And that's five-zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have no new business, so we'll move to our second public comment session. Again, any resident of the town of Burwick with any business under the purview of the Burwick Planning Board, feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the audience at home. All right, seeing nobody come up, I'm going to close the public comment session. Any informational items?
I've got something.
All right.
Our critical dates are coming up faster than I'm ever ready for, really, which means land use ordinance amendments will start kind of like January 2nd will be the intro. And then over the course of January and early February, we'll revise them. And we can do our public hearing February 20th. So that's about basically when they're finalized. So if you have ideas, now's the time to start thinking about them. Something I am thinking, we're about the point where I think it makes sense to start putting a cap on the marijuana establishments in Burwick. And we can continue that. We can have a dialogue about that over the course of January. And then, off the top of my head, simplifying our owner-occupied apartment ordinance, which is accessory dwelling units. It's kind of a hot topic in planning.
No, it's not.
On the cap, James, could you do a little bit of research and find out what other towns our size are capping at, if they are in fact capping it, or maybe what the larger cities are capping it at?
And we're talking about doing it by zone also.
I realize that, but, I mean, the idea is that we might have a small zone and put three times as many in there that somebody else has got a population.
Well, basically, my suggestion to... Well, basically, my suggestion to you folks is that the number of establishments who are basically in, that's the number. And if anyone else wants to come in, someone has to leave.
That's something to consider, and I'm sure the public will weigh in on that at the public hearing.
Yeah, it'll be, it's part of a, it's, yeah, it's part of an extended discussion we'll have throughout January.
Okay. Then the only other comment I have of James would be, is James attended a National Brownsville Conference. Did you pick up any tidbits of information or things along the line that the planning board should be aware of and can be considering to incorporate into our ordinance that might just supplement Brownsville's programs? Or you, or just look into that if you would?
Yeah, I can't think of anything from a zoning perspective, but, I mean, one thing that I learned that was inspiring, there's tons of projects out there that were done on LA-sized landfills, and they turn them into amazing projects, so there's other brownfields out there in Berwick that we can go and turn them into successful projects, so looking, I'll think about zoning things from a brownfield's perspective.
Yeah, just, I mean, we should, because, I mean, we got--
We're experts on it now. May as well run with it. Anything else, anybody?
Was there any more information that came out of the last, the second listening session with Gray Falls?
Oh, did you listen to the second session?
I did not get a chance to see it.
It's a good one. It was a pretty lively discussion.
It was good.
You can skip the questions part because the facilitator kind of boils them down, and it starts about a half hour to 45 minutes into the video, and it's really, it's pretty informative.
It was a good exchange of information.
I watched it on vacation, and I was entertained by it, so.
So they're picking their engineer firm this week. They had about 10 to 15 engineer firms submit RFPs, so they're picking that, and then once they pick the engineer, they're going to start picking their team of architects, and then I think they'll start developing their concepts. And they've already scheduled listening sessions for February, April, and June, and I'll get those dates out on the website.
Can you also inform people at home how long the engineer process takes?
Oh, yeah.
They're getting calls about it.
I mean, the planning process--
Why aren't they building anything yet?
Let's do this, right now.
The planning process is probably a year-long process, and the good news is that process has already started.
Yeah.
He spoke to that. He did speak that night, and he did say it'd be a year out before they really get, because they got years of engineering and permitting.
There's a small chance, if they can carve out a small project that meets with our ordinance, but our ordinance is pretty specific in saying, "You got to master plan the whole site."
Yeah.
But they might, they own a duplex that they can rehab by right, so that might be one of their first projects.
And I guess, I'd like to know along the way, as they are master-planning this thing, that we don't see it in the 11th hour? I think we talked about that communication component.
They're scheduled, they'll be back in February, they've already scheduled it, February, April, and June.
So they may have working documents at those points in time to show how it's being considered, progressed?
Yeah.
Decided, okay.
Frank, they're probably going to be looking at like the beginning stages of any kind of plan five to six months out from now. And they were, they said that as they come back, they'll just share that information with everybody, but that's how long it's going to take for just the beginning set of plans that they're going to do.
Excellent. Well, I want to thank you all for being here tonight because we don't normally have to have a meeting on the third Thursday in December, but we voted to have this meeting because we got paid extra to be here. Kidding.
Double.
Double, yeah, we got paid double. They doubled our pay for today, so we were like, we might as well do this. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Hi, motion that we adjourn this evening's December 19th meeting, the last meeting of 2019.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?